Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting together. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, we're going to open with comments from the general public, and we have a very large public, so I'd like everybody to keep it to a three-minute maximum, please. Would anyone like to begin?
Hey, good evening.
Good evening Tammy, how are you?
Good. Hello, my name is Tammy Johnson, I'm a Carver teacher, I'm a VP for EAPC, and I'm also a parent in live in Carver. And one of the things that I'd like to comment on is overall is the budget cuts, and I know everyone here, because they've been to the school committee meetings, is very much aware of the impact that this budget takes, budget crisis is going to impact our students. But there's a few things from last school committee meeting that came out that I just wanted to make sure was clear, because I always felt like I was, I just feel like there's more information that needs to be out there. One of the things was the middle school drama club. Now, I understand there's a lot of fees and a lot of things going on, and people are believing, you know, you could speak two ways, I understand you have a collective amount of money that you need to save in order to make a difference, so you don't take away jobs, completely understand that. When I came here last Monday, the last school committee meeting, I understood that the middle school drama club was one of the positions that was being taken away. However, I didn't understand it was in the same line and thought of as some of the other clubs that are not in existence and are not as consistent as middle school drama club. So I wanted to make sure that the school committee members knew about what has been happening with the middle school drama club. For example, not last year, but the two prior years, there has been a show, the middle school drama club has, it was Attack of the Zombies and Reasons Not to Do a Play. And one of the reasons why I actually got involved with it was because the 50 Reasons Not to Do a Play, I became a volunteer. And the following year, I thought, I didn't understand that no one was going to step up for it, so I did though this year. The drama club, or any theater arts, including the music and the art programs across the school system, brings so many different opportunities to our students. And I just want to make sure that, again, people understand. For example, this year, I was just in an IEP meeting with a parent, and one of the things that she was mentioning was how much the middle school drama club has done for her child. He has been out of his comfort zone, meeting friends, the transition to the middle school has been made that much more easy for him, because he's part of this. The middle school drama club went to the Golden Living Center and presented a skit, multiple skits, to the residents that live there, and it was an incredible experience for both our students and the residents of the Golden Living. On February 18th, our middle school students are collectively writing a play, it's called Undertale, and it's, the process has been incredible. They're writing it, they're setting up the sets, the screens, everything that they're doing is, and going through the process. And again, I can't, the theater arts program, as any music and arts program, provides so many opportunities, speaking, writing, building self-confidence, music, set design, teamwork, building relationships, and most important, a sense of community. So I am asking that actually people do look at this, I have a regularly number of at least 30 to 40, sometimes 50 students, and up to 60 students that attend each of these meetings. So it is going to have a tremendous effect. And again, cutting any kind of arts and music takes away this big hole that I don't want to see in our town. Thank you.
Thank you Tammy. Would anyone else like to speak?
Sure, come on up, please.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jen Douding, president of Carver Music Boosters, I'm a parent of junior class of 2018, and I have a kindergartner this year, she's in Mrs. Lake's retiring kindergarten class. She has music with Ms. Jokas, she loves it, it's wonderful, and all of her specials, everyone gets equal. My letter says it better, the letter that I mailed. I did share the letter on Facebook as well, because I thought that other people should be able to read the letter, because I am horrible at public speaking. And I do that as a parent, that's as a parent. As a music booster, I just heard, I just found out about the middle school thing, because I don't know everything. I'm also having another kindergartner next year. I want their, I want the specials to be equal at elementary school level, because it's just, it does so much. I have letters from Merit Awards, I can, these are copies, they're anonymous, if I could read a couple, and just tell me when my time's up? Is that okay? Sorry. Thank you. Merit Award application from 2012, Merit Award is an award we give out to graduating seniors, this is just an application, it wasn't a winner, or it could have been a winner. Excuse me. It seems almost yesterday I was singing God Bless the USA at the fourth grade talent show with the American flag behind me, and my small baby blue button-up shirt tucked in with my pant, waist at my belly button, looking like a small Steve Urkel. Little did I know that high school music would go by this fast. I remember being one of the only boys in Mr. Tunis' class in sixth grade, because everyone thought chorus was for girls. I've been with many music teachers, but the important thing is that I stuck in there. I showed them, I showed that someone can be captain on the football field and a captain on the risers. Over the years, more and more boys would start to join the chorus, because they realized you don't join for easy credits, or because it's an easy class, you join because you love music and you love to sing. I've had many experiences with chorus and many good times that helped with my high school career. It was almost like a break in the middle of the day, where I got to escape the world of tests and quizzes and take a whole hour to do what I love to do. Out of many competitions, fundraisers, and concerts, it gives you a sense of family, almost like football does. There are no stars in chorus, just leaders, because when that piano starts to play, you all become one, and the rest is history. Do I still have time?
How about just one more, please? Thank you.
I feel that I have contributed a great deal of improvement, this is also a class of 2012, I had them in order, to the music program here in Carver. I have been both dedicated and enthusiastic participant, as well as a leader. In virtually all aspects of the program, in both chorus and band, I try to perform the best of my ability on a daily basis, so that I can be a role model and a leader for both groups. I have seen some of my friends improve greatly and even surpass me as musicians, I can hope for, I can only hope that my influence was a factor. The music program has given me confidence, a sense of belonging in a group of people, and a love of music that I will have for the rest of my life. One of my quotes from my thing. The things that all these people have in common, they all had two music teachers, two different aspects, Mr. Baricat and Ms. Jokas, and I think that the elementary school students deserve to have two different aspects of art and music and athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone have any questions?
Jen, you could certainly give us a copy of the letters if you'd like, absolutely. You should give us a copy.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Deswaldo, and I am a resident of Carver. I'm here just to thank you, I know all of you, and I appreciate all of the time and energy and support you have given our schools through the years. I just wanted to take this short time to touch base on the purpose I feel that school committee has as a voter. You are the voice for the people who have no voices, the students and children of our community. They cannot vote. You are the voice and the vote for the teachers who do not live in Carver. So I ask you, please, during these tough budget times, to please think carefully and cautiously when faced with these budget cuts about your decisions, and I know that you will, but I will say this, the working conditions of our staff and our teachers and all of the employees of Carver Public Schools is the learning conditions of our students. So please, just be very, very cautious, we've worked long and hard in this town to get where we are with the programs we have, and it is very, very important to me as a resident, as a mom who raised a son through Carver High School, and he has done remarkably well due to the Carver Public Schools, I would like to see the children coming up, my current students, my future students, and the students now in the middle high school, to have the very same opportunities that the children in surrounding communities have. They deserve no less. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Nikki, and my son is in first grade. My son entered the school system a little early, needed a little extra help. Luckily, the Carver educators were able to give me guidance and exactly what my son needed, help. One of the things that I truly enjoy is I have seen so much progress in the two years he's participated in our educators and what they have to offer him. Also, I've enjoyed going and seeing these sing-alongs that he participates in. Music is one thing that my son responds to. It is a break from everything else in his day, where he gets to be just a little different, and all kids need that. Also, my son has recently come off of an IEP, and he gets a lot of help from some of the other programs that Carver has to offer. So with one support already being pulled, I'd really dislike to see any more get pulled for him. He's come such a long way, and all the educators have so much to offer, it would be a shame to take away all the upcoming students' opportunities that they have to give. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to approach and speak? Well, thank you for all of those that have. We're going to move along to comments from the EAPC.
Good evening, Happy New Years, I don't think I've seen some of you since. Tonight you'll be addressing difficult decisions made by the Carver School District. I'd like to thank Scott for his professionalism in meeting with each staff member that would be affected by the possible cuts and layoffs. The Education Association of Plymouth and Carver does understand the difficulties of budget shortfalls for residents, school committee members, administrators, and Carver School staff. It is a stressful time for our members, who will be affected by cutbacks in budget adjustments. Recently, there was an article in the December Carver Reporter where selectman said he was disappointed in our decision not to open the contract, as he felt it was a knee-jerk reaction. I wanted to be known that the educational staff of Carver voted after a thorough, thoughtful, and difficult discussion to not open the contract. This decision was based on information that was presented to us. As we have done in the past, the EAPC has never closed the door, and is always open to discussions on options with you. I want to thank you for coming up with different ways to fix our budget and the shortfalls. We understand that this is a difficult time, but providing educational excellence is a goal that we all share, so I just want to thank you.
School committee protocols?
Okay, the first agenda item we have tonight is actually a follow-through on something that we as a committee have been working on throughout the fall. During the fall, we had two meetings with Dorothy Presser that focused on how the group will work together best to serve the students of Carver and the community. Based on our work over these two meetings, we developed a series of protocols, yeah, if you could pull them up, that'd be great, that we reviewed at the second meeting. And at that meeting, we decided that in one of our January meetings, we would take a look at these protocols, you know, discuss them if the committee felt that was necessary, and look to move forward in terms of voting them as this would kind of be our operating guidelines as a committee and how we will function. The concept of this is Dorothy Presser represented a combination of the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. They support the work of working with new superintendents and school committees in terms of establishing the relationship between the superintendent and the school committee and the Carver community as a whole. So Dorothy, as a representative of the Mass Association of School Superintendents and the Mass Association of School Committees, came out and spent, did two sessions with us. Each session was a little over two hours, where the committee really had discussions about how we're going to work and how we're going to operate. And one of the outcomes of those two meetings was the development of these protocols, and then us moving forward as a group to kind of sign on to them as operating procedures. You know, we, over that time, we were at those meetings, I don't know if we necessarily need to go through them one by one, obviously if anybody in the committee wanted to address any specific parts of the protocol, we could do that, or if the committee felt appropriate, we could move forward on the question and look to formally adopt these in today's meeting.
Well, I think in a way, Scott, if you look at some of these, they're really representative of what all these people are here for tonight. So I think maybe focusing in on what they are is supportive, that when we make the decisions that we make, this is where we're coming from.
And I do think that'd be valuable, so we can go through, so, I can read them, there's 12 of them, I have no problem going through and reading the 12 things. So I'll read the entire document. For the purpose of enhancing teamwork among members of the school committee and between our school committee and the administration, we, the members of the Carver School Committee, do hereby commit ourselves to the following operating protocols. Number one, the school committee will represent the needs and interests of all children in the district. Number two, the school committee will help establish the vision, create policies, and assure accountability to the district's mission to support all students. The superintendent will manage the schools and staff. Number three, the school committee will consider best practice, public input, and financial impacts of their decision-making. Number four, the school committee and the superintendent will facilitate goal-setting for the district. Number five, the school committee will work towards continuous improvement in teaching and learning by clearly defining district goals, developing policies, and promoting achievement of all students. Number six, the school committee will conduct its business through a set agenda. Emerging items will be addressed in subsequent meetings through agenda items. Number seven, the school committee will channel requests for information through the superintendent and the school committee chair rather than directly to staff. The superintendent will ensure each member has equal access to information. Number eight, the school committee members will work together to clarify and restate discussions in order to strive for full understanding. Number nine, the school committee will recognize the single official voice of the board. Number 10, the school committee will base our decisions on facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support decisions of the majority of the committee once a decision is made. Number 11, the school committee will maintain trust and mutual respect between among committee members, the superintendent, and the administration by treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement. And finally, number 12, the school committee recognized the importance of working collaboratively with town officials to improve our schools. You know, obviously, I agree, James, I think there are several things here that tie into the comments that have been already made at tonight's meeting, and the reality of the difficult decisions the committee is going to have to make over the next few months. And not that I need to go back, I guess I'll pick specific ones that touch me as I read them, in terms of those ideas, and other members can comment as well. Obviously, number one, the school committee will represent the needs and interests of all children in the district. So in making these decisions, we have to, we have to make sure we're representing everybody and doing the best we can to serve all students. The school committee will consider best practice, public input, and financial impacts of their decisions. Obviously, that is, that's a huge piece of what we're going to be doing over the next few days, or really, the next few months, sorry.
I think number 10, Scott, is an important one also there.
The school committee will base our decisions on facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support decisions of the majority once the committee has reached, sorry, once committee wants a decision is made. And I was also thinking, school committee members will work together to clarify and restate discussions in order to strive for understanding. You know, and in terms of facilitating some of these ideas, from my perspective, the approach that we're taking in addressing some of these budget shortfalls are hopefully living up to the standards established here through these protocols. So we've broken the presentation into two meetings in January, and specifically, and we're going to get into more detail to this as we get into the next agenda item, but we've spoken about the fact that we're not asking the committee to vote any of these items this evening, we didn't ask any of the committee to vote any of these specific items in the first January meeting. The concept was, we wanted to be very transparent, we wanted to be very clear about what our proposals are. And at this time, they are proposals. Now, eventually, those proposals may have to become facts over the next couple of months as we go through the budget process, sorry, having a formal budget hearing, voting a budget number that's going to go to the town, and then the town voting that through the town meeting on April 11th. So as that process occurs over the next couple of months, we're going to be, we're going to get to a point where we're going to have to finalize and make some decisions. But ultimately, the process of getting the information out there, seeking public input, giving the members the opportunity to consider the proposals that have been made, and the reality is, some of those proposals may change. What's being laid out specifically over these two meetings, and I'm not saying there's no guarantee that it will, it may not, but the process is established to have us really take full input, really think about the tough decisions we need to make, and how we need to approach those decisions. And I do think, hopefully, this process will in some way support some of the protocols we're establishing here tonight. I don't know if any other members want to address any of these, or discuss this in particular?
I think the ones you targeted spoke to exactly what tonight's going to represent, but just really, the 12 that are listed here, we take them to heart, all right, so they really mean something, and it's, you know, it meant something to listen to the five of you come up, I mean, it was just so touching, and it's, but it's also something that we're all dealing with, we're feeling very similar. So at the end of the day, we try to, you know, follow these 12 as best we can, but we certainly understand what it's like to be on that side, so, just want to let you know.
Well, I'd just say, these protocols came in a way by us meeting and working together as a committee, and trying to do the best we can for the community, working together and putting any disagreements, any, anything, any preconceived notions aside, and trying to have everything out and be transparent, to do the best job we can for the town, and for the children of the town, and the families that they belong to. So that's where this all, this came from, if you're wondering how it came about, it was a best practice, this type of practice, for lack of a better word.
Well, and I think that to support what Andrew said, it's not rhetoric, it's what we're trying to do, we're not just putting out words so they look good on paper. You know, this issue that we're facing tonight is potentially, and also possibly because of a deficit that existed before we even got to the budget. So this deficit that was there that had to be made up before we even got to making the budget, which was going to put us behind anyway, sort of put us in a place where we don't have a lot of options with what we have to do. Things have been cut to where they need to be cut, and we've applauded Scott and Brad through this process and their creativity to try and find the least impacting ways that we can do what we have to do. I have children in the school, most of us up here have children in the school, we're not looking to hinder our children's education anymore than anybody else's, or to take anybody's job away. Because no matter what new school we build, no matter what we do for education in this district, it's the people that are in it that make the difference. And I think you need to know that you have a committee that understands that and recognizes that, and that they're working to try and do the best they can to make this the least impacting possibility that we can have. And I think these support that completely, and it was a thoughtful process in making those, and I think the list came out really well.
Excellent. Anything else? Would anybody like to add anything else? Scott?
Nope.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to the...
Yeah, if the committee, if the committee wills, we'd like to make a motion to accept the protocols.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All five of us, Anne Marie. We're going to move on to the fiscal year 18 proposed budget reductions, Scott?
Okay. Just waiting for Meredith to pull up the PowerPoint.
While she's pulling that up, Scott, do you want questions at the end, or would you like that as we go through?
What's the preference of the committee? I think it might, it might make sense to, I'll try to give as much background on each proposal as possible, maybe we will, it might be better to take all the questions at the end, but I don't want to, I also don't want to stifle discussion, so, I mean, this is a very indirect answer of, let's see what happens.
Could we maybe...
And we'll go through and do what...
Scott, check out like after each slide, if there's a question on a slide?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Do it that way?
Yep, I'm comfortable with that, if the committee's comfortable with that. So the first couple of slides are actually repetitive to the first meeting in January, just a reminder of what our estimate is of our shortfall at this time. You know, so for FY18, a level service budget would require a budget of $24,011,701. That would have to be, have everything stay exactly the way it is within the district, and meet the contractual raises, the expected raises in healthcare, and maintain all current programs.
One quick addition on this slide, it's about $3,000 less, the shortfall is, from the previous slide you guys saw. Also, this includes any adjustments that we had for health insurance in FY18. So our health insurance number, we've confirmed, and that's what we're going to go forward with in the budget, so that's something, thankfully, we don't have to worry about fluctuation of up and down as we go forward.
And I think people here, just on that note, real quick, Brad, I think as we come across these things, the town is working really hard to come up with creative ways to adopt that, so when we come up with a line that that's it, and the town is working really hard to try and come up with long-term plans that will address these issues instead of just now. So, you know, the, when we pick a number with health insurance, that can be all over the place, depending on hires, rehires, changes, and that can make it difficult to budget it properly. So instead of over-budgeting, the town is, we're trying to get a more succinct number, and then the town is working with us to be able to compensate if there are changes within that. So I think it's important for a lot of you to hear too, that it's not, we're not doing this alone, this is a cooperative nature between the town and the school committee.
So, right now, the town's proposed budget for the school district is $22,769,286, which is a 2.2% increase over this year's FY17's budget, represents a little bit over, a little over 500,000, I think it's 501 and change, increase in our budget. And just because of, if everyone was here this evening, I'll kind of be repetitive on what we talked about in the January 9th meeting, you know, some people have asked this question of how has this shortfall gotten so large? And really, the biggest factor in our shortfall, which is up there, you know, $1,242,415, is ultimately, we started this year, we discovered this year at the beginning of the fiscal year, that we had about a $490,000 shortfall. We didn't do a lot to remediate that shortfall, we used reserves through circuit breaker, we used reserves in school choice to fill the gap to maintain this year. We've cut spending, I mean, all the teachers out there know that the budget's been frozen for a while, and there hasn't been much spending going on, that would be an overstatement to say that any spending has been going on. So we're, our goal is to get through this year and maintain all staff for this year. You know, when that, when I, when I came to the realization of that number in August, I really felt at that time, I was despondent, I went home that evening and said, I'm going to have to lay people off before school starts, there's no way we're going to be able to make up $490,000. But we've, we found a way to do it, but we found a way to do it that wasn't necessarily, in essence, I was pushing off the problem. And I knew that, I knew that when we made that decision, we were pushing off the problem. But I felt like... But I felt like, uh, it was more important for this fiscal year, it was more appropriate for this fiscal year to maintain our staff in full this year. So, that had us spend down some of our reserves, uh, that had us, you know, really not address the problem. We made some cuts, and as we go through this presentation, some of those cuts are going to be carried into next year. But those cuts only made a small dent in that $490,000 shortfall. So, that 490, in many ways, just carried forward to FY18. That's part of that 1.2 million. So, that made, that number is so large, because if you put 490,000 to that, that is, I'm not, that's a third. You know, a third of our shortfall was just a carryover from this year. Then the other parts of the shortfall go into, you know, right now, we're projecting 11% increase in health insurance for all employees, and then our contractual raises, uh, for all of our employees, which is 2% across, across the board. And then steps and level changes for, for staff. You know, that, that's, there's, there's nothing new here, we're not adding anything, we're not, that's what it is, that's what, that's where that number comes from. But really, a large part of that number was a carryover from the FY17 budget that we're surviving, but we didn't really address in the FY17 budget. And that's what makes this, this shortfall, uh, so large. Brad, I don't know if there's a, if you want to add on to that.
The only thing that we have left that might come into play to raise the shortfall is I'm waiting for the renewal rates on electricity. That's the only thing outstanding right now. Uh, once I get that back, we'll be able to pinpoint an exact number and go forward with it.
And then, in terms of, James, you brought up town support, I just wanted, uh, it's not a slide on here, uh, but I want to address that in terms of, I have been working, attempting to work with the town and the town administrator, uh, in terms of what things can we do to try to remediate this shortfall to the best of our ability. And, so the town, at this time, uh, has, is proposing to cover unemployment. So, anybody who was laid off, then that, that is a huge help, because unemployment costs, the, the ratio that people generally use is that for each two, each two people that you lay off, you have to lay off a third to cover the unemployment. Uh, so the town being willing to support paying all unemployment, which is normally on the school's side of the budget, that reduces your number of people that need to be cut. The town offered the retirement incentive, we're not sure if the retirement incentive, but is willing to support the retirement incentive, um, through this, with the school district. We don't know exactly how that will play out, uh, teachers have up till February 18th to accept that retirement incentive. Uh, but that was going to be funded, or is going to be proposed to be funded through town meeting. And we've also talked about, coming up into the upcoming town meeting, and I know the Board of Selectmen have talked about some of these things, creation of what we're going to call a special education circuit breaker account, uh, creation of a health insurance circuit breaker account, uh, and probably creation of a utility circuit breaker account. How these things help us, and James and Brad just mentioned it, uh, so, for example, we met with the town administrator last week, and we established a, a healthcare number. So, we said, "The budget we're proposing right now, this is our healthcare number for next year." And the reality is, the district employs over 300 people. Over the summer, people have changes in life circumstances, they go to a family plan, they add a family plan because their husband becomes, or wife becomes unemployed. They, we hire people, people leave the district, we hire people, and we, they have a family plan or an individual plan. So, that, who actually is enrolled in healthcare today is going to be different on September 1st. Does that makes, does that make sense? The town is agreeing to say, "Okay, here's the number today, and you can budget that number." And then going forward, if anything changes, we're going to have the, proposing a town meeting to support an account that would cover those changes. So, that wouldn't fall back on the school's budget. How that assists us, if that wasn't going to take place, we would have to put in a variable cost there. We'd have to say, "Well, we have to prepare for changes, because we have to be able to cover them in our budget." Historically, how the school district has prepared for those changes is by, in essence, budgeting extra healthcare lines. You know, they, they budget two or three, or sometimes the district budget as much as five extra people for healthcare. But the healthcare cost for an individual is anywhere from 17,000 to 20,000. If we budgeted four extra people, that's $80,000 we'd be adding to our shortfall. So, by the town saying, "We're going to establish a, a budget number as of last week for healthcare," now we have a number, and that number's real, we know our shortfall's not going to be more than that. Same thing for utilities. So, we're taking our variable costs and are coming up with a number and saying, "This is where we are, those were, as of today, those are those numbers, and if they change, the town will be supportive if town meeting supports it, all this goes to town meeting." So, I don't want to make, I don't want to make this like this is a done deal, town meeting has to support this, and if they don't, then we'll have to come back to the drawing board. Uh, but I think the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the finance committee are all going to be on board to support this, that if those things occur, uh, that, that's helping us this year. It's helping remediate that shortfall. Because otherwise, we would have to build in, the school committee would have to build in some contingencies, and those contingencies would increase that shortfall number. Uh, so I just want to acknowledge that, that, that piece of it.
Well, I think, Scott, and just to reiterate again, I think it's, it's a plan that's long-term for this town. It's not a short-term idea to fix the bleeding right now, but over the long period, this is really going to benefit us in being able to budget much more appropriately for what we need to do.
And on that same concept, uh, also not a slide up there, uh, but, uh, we had a joint school committee and board of selected meeting, uh, about a week and a half ago. And at that meeting, we did discuss, uh, we are concerned long-term about, uh, what is being proposed as the, the increase for the school budget. You know, right now, the projection of the town administrator, uh, over a 10-year period is on average a 1.74% increase. And we had a discussion as a board of selectmen and as a school committee, uh, and myself and the town administrator and Brad, saying that, you know, long-term, that's not sustainable, 1.74% growth for anybody isn't sustainable. And, so that's a concern. But at that meeting, we discussed four ways in which that needs to be addressed. You know, one is through, uh, advocating for an increase in state aid. Uh, there's been some work across the state to say that the chapter 70, uh, former, this chapter 70 foundation budget process is negatively impacting communities like Cover. The board of selectmen and the school committee agreed, actually, for our next joint meeting, which I think is March 30th, is that that, is at that meeting, we're going to invite our local representatives to talk about that issue, and maybe to push that issue a little bit more of, "We need to improve the chapter 70." We don't have a lot of control over that, but we could advocate saying that needs to change. And I don't know how many people know that that, that process has been going on statewide. There was a commission last year that evaluated the chapter 70 formula and made some recommendations, uh, of changes that need to be made to the state legislature. Uh, the state legislature has not implemented any of those changes at that time of the recommendations of that joint, of that committee, uh, but I know that they're looking at that issue. We talked about needing to increase, uh, the revenue of the town, and the board of selectmen are working towards doing that. And the reality is, the town has to find a way to bring in more revenue. Uh, because if we don't find a way to bring in more revenue, we're going to struggle to keep, maintain that 1.74%. We, we did talk about the concept of, if, maybe there has to be a reallocation of how the town currently uses its revenue. Doesn't mean that's going to happen, but it's a discussion that may have to occur going forward in the future. And the fourth thing we talked about is that maybe there does need to be some reductions in reorganization of the school budget. Uh, we said, some of the, some or all of those things need to happen for the long-term sustainability of the school district. So, James, you brought up long-term sustainability of the school district. Maybe, maybe all of those things need to happen for us to really talk about the long-term sustainability, uh, of the district. But that's kind of the, the big picture of, of where we are, uh, right now. That was a lot for that slide. Yeah, they say you're not supposed to read your PowerPoint, so I, I'm not, not reading my PowerPoint. I know the audience is going to look at this, and, and, you know, obviously, since we've had some communication with some teachers, you know, obviously, the list that's being presented tonight has not been presented formally to the public yet. But we've had some individual conversations with teachers, so some, so people have an idea of what's going to be on this list this evening. And I just wanted to reestablish this, as the administrative team, we sat down over a series of meetings, and we talked about, "How are we going to do this? How are we going to meet this 1.2 or 1.1 million dollar shortfall? And what are going to be our priorities when we look at things?" And if you look at the priorities, what we list, maintain programs that meet the needs of all students, maintain intervention programs and systems of support for diverse learners, maintain allied arts programs, maintain consistency in curriculum supported by professional development. Now, when you look at those things, I can argue people in the audience say, "Hey, I have some idea of things on that list that I don't think links true with that list." And my response to that is, we're talking about a 1.2 million dollar shortfall. So, if we say, say something like, "Maintain allied arts programs," from the administrative perspective, we were looking at as pawns of, "We're not going to cut, we're not going to say there's not going to be an art program in the middle school. We're not going to say there's not going to be an art program at the elementary school. We're not going to say there's not going to be a music program at the high school." And we're talking about the elimination of programs versus, you know, we want to minimize the impacts to much, to the best of our ability, but when you go back to 1.2 million dollars, 1.2 million dollars has to come from somewhere. And our focus when we did these things was to keep these four things in line and say, "What can we do to the best of our ability to maintain an adequate program in all of these areas?" And we're going to talk about that as we go through, um, these, these discussions, and, and we can refer back to these priorities. Uh, but I can understand why people in the audience might look at that and say, "Hey, I, I raised my hand and say, 'I don't know if what you're going to present matches up with that.'" But I wanted to give that perspective, uh, before we move forward. So, the other thing that we did, uh, as an administrative team, and we've been looking at this for a couple of months now, and every time we meet, uh, the list changes. So, since January 9th, our group has met again, and our list has changed again a little bit. And my original construct was three phases. Phase one was what I called impacts outside of the classroom. Phase two, we talked about major impacts on staffing that didn't eliminate programs. Maybe affected programs, maybe modified programs, maybe led programs to be restructured, but didn't eliminate programs. Phase three became, this was going to either eliminate a program or really substantially hinder that program's effectiveness. We didn't want to get to phase three. But if, just in terms of our own structure of thinking about things, that's how we tried to categorize it as an administrative team, and said, "What is this? Is this a phase one, is this a direct, uh, impact outside the classroom? Is it a phase two, that it is an impact in the classroom, but we're trying to maintain the programs to the best of our ability? Or it is a phase three, where we're really eliminating or severely hampering a program?" And in the end, phase, in some, this is good, in some good ways, we didn't get that far into phase three, where we were just eliminating programs. But we did have a piece, there is one thing that's kind of mul, there's one piece that's molded into phase two, because it, I didn't want to, we didn't want to have a phase three that just had one item in it. There's only one program that we're talking about totally eliminating, that we've put into phase two, that would be an elimination of a program, to meet, to meet that shortfall. And the interesting part there is, it says, it, where we are right now, what we're going to present tonight still is going to leave us 42,761 dollars short. And the reason why it is, why the reason that it's going to happen is that we're having a hard time going to that next 42,000 of what's that next position. And we, as administrative team, said, "We have time, we're, our budget, uh, you know, ultimately, we're looking to have a public budget hearing officially, whether the school committee may vote a budget number in February, so let's go back and look at the list again." Uh, and, and we're, so, in the end, we agreed to leave us a little short tonight of our full shortfall, because we're trying to analyze each of these things to the best of our ability to come up with the best decisions that, in some ways, Meredith, if you can go back to the budget priorities, that maintain those budget priorities to the best of our ability, with the realization of, we're 1.2 million dollars short. So, what, which, I guess, that's all the background, let's, um, get into what, what we currently are proposing. So, the current propos, these are the current proposals of positions that, uh, we would look to, uh, eliminate going forward into the FY18 budget, based on the background that I just laid out. District-wide, first, out-of-district coordinator. Uh, right now, Karen Tykert has a contracted services person who's helping her coordinate some of the students who are out of district. Uh, it's at eight, that person's making $8,000, uh, so that position would be removed. The impact of that is Karen Tykert, as the director of special education, would be in charge of all out-of-district placements. That's a fairly high level of responsibility in terms of attending all the meetings of students who are out of district, plenty, in essence, Karen becomes the liaison for all of those students out of district. And so that, that's our first proposal. Math coordinator-coach. So, we're looking to eliminate the administrative position of math coordinator or coach. Loss of instructional math coach, data collections in meeting, supervision of Title I math parays, supervision of teachers, uh, because the person does currently work as an administrator in the district and has administrative responsibilities through our evaluation system. And reached, and it's going to cause us to restructure our math intervention model. We're going to come back to this, because really, what we're proposing is a total restructuring of the math intervention model at the elementary school, uh, through the elimination of the coach. But there's some restructuring, uh, that's going to happen there, but we'll come back to that, uh, later in the presentation. And then mechanic assistance position at the bus bar. Part-time position, this person actually resigned this year, and we didn't fill it. So, this is a position that helped us a little bit in the FY17 budget, and our thought process was, uh, to not fill it going into next year. Uh, so those would be the, uh, cuts at the district-wide level. So, I don't know if there's any questions on that slide. I, I know I kind of left the math, restructure of the math intervention model open, we'll come, we'll come back to that. Elementary school support staff. We're proposing the reduction of, uh, two lunchroom monitors. The impact there is loss of early lunch recess. Uh, the district did have two lunch monitors, currently, the district employs six lunch monitors. At the, uh, elementary school, this would put us down to four. For many years, we had four lunch monitors, so we're actually returning to the staffing that we've had previously with the same number of students. What the loss there for us is right now, and, and maybe we could direct questions to Ruby more directly if we needed to on this, or Paula, is that, um, the students have the opportunity, if they finish their lunch early, to get a little extra recess, and to go outside during, to go outside during lunch. So, what that means is, instead of going out, and one of the lunch monitors goes outside with them, and two of them stay in the cafeteria. Uh, and the thought process is, that would be harder to do, leaving one lunch monitor alone in the cafeteria. But in terms of overall staffing, this is a staffing level that the district actually had for many years. Uh, we had four lunchroom monitors and not six.
Is there any requirement of numbers, like per pupil, per monitor?
No.
So, there is nothing?
There's no, there's no specific requirements to that.
Not for the, not for the recess.
Recession, but not for the lunch monitors, not for lunch monitors. Uh, for, for many years, as assistant principal at both the middle school and high school, I did lunch by myself with over 230 kids. The next position on this list is the loss of six lead teachers. Uh, so each grade level at the elementary school has a lead teacher. I mean, this is, this is a huge loss, because right now, those lead teachers provide curriculum and instructional leadership. Uh, they're part of the leadership team, uh, within the school district, helping with, uh, evaluations, but really, more importantly, uh, helping with curriculum and instructional support for the teachers on their, on their grade-level teams. Those lead teachers have been in place for, I don't know the exact number of years, going into our fourth year with the lead teachers. And this was, this was, these are all, I could say that's on each position, these are all hard decisions, none of them are good. Uh, but we're trying to look at decisions that have the least direct impact on instructional services for students, and going back to that list of budget priorities in terms of maintaining programs, maintaining supports for students. Six-time, six-part-time paras, uh, reading and math. Two of the, two of the reading paras currently cover the lead teachers and do reading intervention. If the lead teach, because the lead teachers get released, released time to do their lead teacher role. Uh, if the, if there are not lead teachers, then we don't need the two paras to cover the lead teachers, to provide them with their lead teacher role time. And then, four of them are for the math intervention model. So, currently, there are four math interventionists who are part-time paras, uh, who support and provide individual supports for students. And what our proposal is for maths, we're eliminating the math coach, the math, the district, the K-5 math coordinator position as an administrative position. We're eliminating the intervention specialists for the paras who are part-time paras who provide intervention in the classroom. And what we're proposing is replacing that with a math coach as a teacher's position. And what we're proposing is replacing that with a math coach as a teacher's position. So we're actually talking about adding a teacher position. That teacher position would provide the same, same or similar types of supports that the intervention paras are providing at this time, but it would be a teacher position. And that person would also provide instructional coaching, working with our teachers in terms of implementing the math program. So our goal would be, it's definitely a change in the service delivery model, but our goal would be to take the administrative position, the four para positions, turn that into one full-time teaching position, trying to maintain a similar type of support. So if you look on the next page, down the very bottom, and this is factored into the budget, we see the addition of a 1.0 full-time math specialist, which would lead the restructuring of the math intervention model. And it's in parentheses because we're actually adding money to the budget there. So we're adding a $48,000 teaching position. But when you look at this, if you still look at the overall savings, if you go back and look at, you know, the, the part, the math paras, it's not broken up, maybe we should have broken the math paras out because the reading paras, the reading paras actually go with the lead teachers, the math paras go with the math interventionist. So I'm not going to give you an exact number of the math paras plus the district-wide position. But the district-wide position's 83,112. The math paras, the four math paras, Brad?
Oh, 40 grand.
Forty, round number of 40,000. So it's a, it's 123, 125,000 dollar reduction, but then we're restructuring it with a $48,000 teaching position. So it's really a $70,000 savings. So we're restructuring the model with, with gaining a $70,000 savings overall. But, and again, the, the thought process here is this goes back to maintaining programs of intervention. We want, we don't want to eliminate math intervention at the elementary school. We're just going to try to do it in a more cost-effective way. So that's the purpose of that, those setups. I know we said go slide by slide, so we'll go back up to the slide. The last thing on the first for support staff was 3.5 full-time equivalencies for pre-K paras and K paras. So we're going to restructure how we're using pre-K and K paras to support kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. It's, in terms of our current staffing, so currently we have 12 part-time K paras and two full-time pre-K paras. So in essence, there is support in the kindergarten classroom throughout the day and support in the pre-K classroom throughout the day. We're looking to restructure that to have six part-time K paras, four part-time pre-K paras. The loss of support would be mostly in the kindergarten, so the kindergarten would not have full, would not have paras support through the entire day, only for half of the day. And we'd be working with the kindergarten teachers, the administration, to determine what would be the most appropriate time to have that paras support during the day. So questions on that page?
Will this affect any credentialing you may have?
Yes, this would affect our NIAC accreditation. I believe we need to have full-time kindergarten's paras support to maintain that accreditation. Paula, when's our next time we're up for that accreditation?
Well, I just did the annual report and the next accreditation is 2021, but the recommended ratio is 1 to 10. It would not necessarily pull our, prevent us from being recertified. It is, they do recommend a 1 to 10, 1 to 11 ratio. And...
When you say one, can you just clarify 1 to 10, 1 to 11? Thank you, Paula. So I, I did, I did tell the administrative staff that I may, I may throw it to them occasionally.
And then the only other, and whether or not that directly impacts depends on where we are in terms of meeting all of these criteria that we have. So it may or may not, but it's not going to have immediate accreditation.
But any grants?
Well, the, these, these kindergarten positions, these pre, these kindergarten para positions were supported through the kindergarten grant through the state. That was one of the reasons for our shortfall this year is that we found out in the second week in July that, that, the grant funding was $55,000. That was what was factored into our budget for FY17. We found out in the second week in July that the governor used his line item veto to remove the kindergarten grant from the budget. And that was statewide, that wasn't only cover. So everybody lost access to their kindergarten grant funding. The governor's position on that was that districts had implemented full-day kindergarten. That was really the goal of the grant, was for districts to implement full-day kindergarten. They, the governor had felt that the grant had achieved its goal and made a political decision to eliminate that from the budget because the state was projecting some budget shortfalls at the beginning of the year. So that, the, these, in some ways, the paras that we are eliminating are actually in alignment with a similar amount of money, or the paras that we're proposing to eliminate are in alignment with a similar amount of money that they were grant-funded and that grant no longer exists. So the grant was 55,000. This, this reorganization of paras in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten is a savings to the district of 52,000, very close to the grant, the grant amount that we lost this year. In terms of impacting us for applying for other grants, I, I don't know of an impact for us applying to other grants.
Scott, the restructuring of the math intervention model, was that something that was going to be implemented next year or is that due to the deficit going to?
That is due to the current budget shortfall. So this was not, this was not a planned intervention prior to this year. Because it, I mean, it has ramifications in a lot of places. It is, it is a loss of an administrative position in the district, someone, so that, that administrative role has to fall on other administrators, really the assistant principals at the elementary school. They're going to have to pick up some of that load. And the other, the other load that's going to fall on the assistant principals at the elementary school is, is the reduction of the lead teachers. The reality is, and I don't know if people always think about this way, I know Liz did talk about this a lot over the last couple of years. You know, a few years back, we did interview, we did begin the implementation of the new educator evaluation system. The new educator evaluation system has an increase in the number of observations and frequency of feedback that needs to be provided to teachers. Part of the reason for the implementation of the lead teachers was to provide supports to the administration to implement that model. Not, it's not the only thing. I'm not saying it's the only thing they do. They do, that's probably, that might be a very small piece of what their overall value to the school district is. But, so all, so no, it's, I guess, that was a complex answer, say, no, that was not a, this is, this is a plan that's being developed in response to the deficit. Because the reality is, I'm proposing that one person as a full-time teacher is going to do the, is going to have to play a similar role that is currently being played by a full-time administrator and four paras, which realistically it's not going to be the exact same level of service.
No. Thank you.
In terms of instructional staff at the elementary school, not to replace a possible elementary school retirement. So there is a teacher who has not formally put in their letter of retirement at this time. So this is a little bit of, it's a little bit of a chance that the district's taking. And we've been in communications with a teacher at the elementary school who has definitely indicated that there's a good chance they're going to retire, but they have not formally put in their letter at this time. But that I think will, we would have that by the time we need to make final budget decisions. And once that was in place, what we're, what the proposal would actually be is in terms of, it would, it would ultimately lead to a reduction of a, of a fifth-grade teaching position. The person retiring is not in fifth grade, you know, but there'd be some restructuring around so that where we, so in essence, what was going to be presented here this evening is going to have us maintain six teachers at each grade level except for fifth grade. So there'd be six teachers in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. There would not be six teachers in fifth grade, there would be five. So the, the retirement is not, the possible retirement is not in fifth, but the, we'd re, you know, we'd do some shuffling to, but in essence, next year, there'd be five fifth-grade teachers.
Why was that decision? Like what?
Uh, just that fifth grade was based on, it wasn't, the class sizes are fairly even. It's actually based on age. We felt like it was more, it was most appropriate, the, these things, I say these that sound ridiculous. It's, it's most, it's most appropriate to keep sixth grade, six teachers at every grade level. But if we had to make a decision, a hard decision to not have six teachers at a grade level, we felt that, the, this, the administration felt the fifth grade was the most appropriate based on the student's age and preparedness to have a little larger class sizes. The class size is probably going to be close to 25. It's not going to be over 25, but it's going to be closer to 25. The next position is a .3 pre-K teacher. What that means in reality would be a loss of a four-day program for three-year-olds. Currently we offer a four-day program for three-year-olds. With the reduction of that position, we'd not be able to offer that next year. You know, we'd still have pre-kindergarten. It would also lead to an increase of load of pre-K teachers. But that also, remember, we're also proposing the pre-K fee. So the fee may reduce the number of students involved in, in pre-K. So it may not increase the teacher's load if less students participate in pre-K, which obviously is a loss for the district if less students are participating in our pre-K. But if the numbers were exactly the same, we'd lose that, a four-day program for three-year-olds. An elimination of an art teacher, which would eliminate instruction for pre-K and reduce instruction for grades K through five in art. And I'll talk, I guess I'll talk about art and music together. The elimination of the music teacher position eliminates instruction for pre-K and reduces instruction K through five. Currently, there are eight allied arts teachers. Ruby, if I make any mistakes here, make sure to point them out to me, but I feel pretty confident. Right now there are currently eight allied arts teachers. So the allied arts schedule at the elementary school runs on an eight-day cycle. Over that eight-day cycle, students have two days of PE, two days of art, two days of music, one day of technology. Sometimes they have a library period. Some students have three of either PE, art, or music.
You have seven allied arts teachers and Mrs. Butts.
Butts. So seven allied arts, Mrs. Butts is the library aide who gives the, does the library piece. So there are, currently, most students, on average, the average student, now this, this isn't for every student, it's a variable, but on average, students receive two days of art, two days of music. Some students have three. The reduction would create a six-day allied arts schedule where two, two days the students would have PE, one day of technology, one day of library, one day of art, one day of music. So instead of having two days of art and music over an eight-day cycle, students would have one day of art and music over a six-day cycle. If you play that out, if you extrapolate that over the school year of 180 days, currently students would have a minimum of 45 days of art and music over the school year. Some students have more, it varies, but on average, students would have 45 days of art and music. Under the proposed reduction, going into next year, students on average would have 30 days of art and music during the school year. So the overall reduction of number of class, the number of days in which a student would have art and music, on average, as I'm trying to say, there's some variables here for the 800 students in the building, but on average, it's a reduction of 15 days, which is 25%. You know, so if you're going, if I know, so it's the, I'll do that, I'll do a third. It's 33%. So it is a one-third reduction in the amount of art and music that students are going to have. Again, I understand why the community, and I've made, I've, I've kind of made my comments to the audience a little bit this evening, but really I'm speaking to the entire community, I understand why, how the community would say that that doesn't jive with, Meredith, if you can go back to the beginning, the budget priorities. I, you know, I'm, I'm always a big person for acknowledgement. And so I started my presentation by saying, this is what the administration establishes our budget priorities. We're going to maintain our allied arts programs. And you say, well, this makes sense. You tell me you're going to maintain allied arts programs, but you just told me you're going to reduce them. And then I'm reinforcing that concept of, we don't love it. It's not, it's not a good decision. But when faced with terrible, when faced with tough decisions in a 1.2 million dollar shortfall, we felt like this was a bad, a good-bad decision, I guess, in terms of, because we're not eliminating it. It's not like students are not going to have art and music at the elementary school. They're going to have a reduction. It's going to go from on average 45 days to an on average 30 days if this proposal was accepted. And I can understand why people would say that's not consistent with the budget priorities established by the administrative team. And, but I also want to say, I don't feel like that's us not meeting our, meeting our responsibility because it was going to be hard to cut 1.2 million and not impact this priority list in, in some way. Sorry, Meredith, we can go back to the list. A reduction of a reading intervention teacher at the elementary school, which would increase the number of students in intervention groups possibly, and also may, may reduce the number of students who would be able to receive reading intervention. The district and through the director of literacy and the administrative team and the teachers look a lot, look at a lot of data and make decisions on what students are going to receive interventions. And there's a cut threshold of what students are going to receive an intervention. So the cut threshold might change a little bit in terms of having fewer students receive the intervention, just the reality of having one less person to do that. Again, it's not, it's maintaining the, it's maintaining the intervention program, but it's not, it may not going to be the same as it currently is. And then we talked about the addition of the 1.0 full-time math specialist in terms of the restructuring of math intervention. Questions on that page?
Not to put you on the spot because I doubt you're going to know this off the top of your head, but where does?
But someone here does.
Maybe, maybe. Allied arts, so we're going to go back to that real fast. The 1 and 6, 2 and 8, where does that put us with surrounding communities?
There, I mean, I don't know if someone's going to know the answer to that exact question. It's something we could clearly research.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, please.
I mean, so my, my comparison is going to be very, a very small window, and it's going to be my own kids. So my, my son at his elementary school, who's in the third grade, currently has, and not why we're proposing this, currently has the same model, has a 1 and 6 rotation, and he has art and music one time and over those six-day rotation. That's one school district. I can't, I cannot make a wide sweeping statement for other school districts.
We have a six-day cycle and some students get two music, some students get two art. It alters, depends on the class and how construction.
Ruby, Paula, I don't know if you have any, if you have any basis to respond to that question, but it's something we could clearly research.
We have created, we have finalized the schedule for next year, but that's what it could potentially look like. And, no, I don't have any input in terms of what other?
And we could, we could clearly sync, we could clearly sync data from our current staff and we could do our own research and bring that back to the committee. I'd be willing to do that.
I don't know if this is necessarily a comparative thing in a way because if, I mean, ideally, we're going to want what we have now.
Yeah, I'm not, ultimately, I'm not saying that this is, I, I think it's good for students to cut this. No, I mean, no. So Tara, you have some information for us?
Yes, my previous job is...
Tara, you come to the light, please.
I...
She's like, they're not.
Okay, all right, don't, don't come to the light.
In the behavior in public schools, one elementary has art and music once every three days and the other has it once every four.
That's fairly common.
Yeah, I mean, so we can, yeah, so, but if, if, if the committee would like us to do some research on that before our February meeting, we can do some research on that. Any, anything else? All right. A final page. It's, it's a little more, it's a little more difficult sometimes to talk about the direct impact, so you're going to see the same information up here for everything, except for the technology teachers, I'll come to last. So at the middle high school, we're proposing the elimination of a teacher in each department, of our core academic departments. An English teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, a history or social studies teacher. You know, class sizes are much more difficult thing to look at the middle high school level because there's so many, there's so much variance in terms of the types of programs and the courses that are offered. Obviously, it's a lot easier to look at, at class size at the elementary level because, you know, you have 120 kids, you have... because, you know, you have 120 kids, you have six teachers, they're divided up equally. That's just not the reality of a middle high school. So the numbers here really do, you know, do we run classes right now that have 25 kids in them? We do. Do we run classes at the middle high school that have 14 kids in them? We do. It varies. So these averages are generic. The averages are better if you look at the middle school courses because in general, at the middle school level, the, at the middle school level, there's less leveling. There is leveling, but there's less leveling. So if you look at middle school history classes this year in seventh grade, the average is pretty consistently 17 to 20. If you look at eighth grade, because it's unlevelled, so the unlevelled courses, they really are in that kind of range balance. The level courses become more diverse in terms of the numbers. So cutting a teacher in each department, we believe that next year, we'll be able to offer the same courses and programs that we currently do at the high school just with more kids in those classes. So your, your generic average isn't going to be 18 to 20. Your generic average is going to be 22 to 25. Then you're going to have individual classes over 25. So for example, as using this year's numbers, I believe right now, US History I or US History II honors has two sections of 16. Next year, we would not run two sections of 16 for honors US History II. We run one section of 32. So though, in individual courses, you're going to have class sizes approaching 30 or possibly over 30 in individual courses. But on average, the average class size within each department will still be 20 to 20, 21 to 25. Now, can I tell you what all those individual courses are that might have a class size of 25 to 30 tonight? I cannot. The high school hasn't even, the middle high school hasn't even done their enrollment currently for next year's courses, but they're in that process. By the end of March, we'll have a pretty good sense of what those numbers are, and it could probably give you some real specifics on, this is a course that might have to run at 30, this is a course that might have to run at 29. And the goal of doing that would be to make sure we can still run the level of electives that we want to run in those courses. I mean, you can make choices to eliminate electives and run your core courses at 20 to 25. But ultimately, I, I think the perspective would be that it's more important to maintain a wide range of offerings as we can as a school district and have some individual classes that are going to be 25 to 30. I don't think that that's going to be across the board. I think there'll be many teachers at the middle high school who will not have a class of 30. But there will be, there'll be a teacher at the middle high school who will have a class of 30 kids or a class of 28 kids. Because if there's only one of those courses, there's only, if there's only one, if 32, if 32 kids, I'm using that number because that's the number from this year, 32 kids sign up for US History I, it's going to be hard to break that into two classes of 16. Where, because what's going to happen is, well, then, may, the choice could be, well, yeah, we can break that into two sections 16, but we have to eliminate one section of psychology and one section of sociology. And then those class numbers are going to go up, and, or you're eliminating a program, or, or we're not going to run that, we're not, you know, we just brought back a civics course. You know, so maybe the decision, the history department would be not run the civics course. So those are the hard decisions that have to be made of, do we maintain the civics course that we just brought back and have a class of 28 or 29? Or do we cut the civics course and have two classes of 16 or two classes of 15? And I, I do think, it's not, again, these, none of these things are things that I'm saying, yeah, we should do these things. But there are things that have happened in the past. I personally had a course, I had a US History I course of 34 students as a teacher. Again, not saying that's good, but it's the reality of what happens at some times. And so these are things that have occurred within the district in the past. And well, we're going to have to balance those decisions. But our general feeling is that even with a cut with the, with one department, of one teacher in each department, we'll be able to maintain our programs through solely through increased class size, which has its impacts, absolutely, has impacts on students, has its impacts on teachers. The last cut is the one thing that would, I would, I, we would originally argue is phase three. It is the elimination of a technology teacher at the middle high school, which would be an elimination of our technology program there beyond the tech ed program that Mr. Rutter does at the middle school. So it would be eliminating technology courses at the high school level, which I would view as a program, you know, an elimination of a program.
So Scott, those larger class sizes, you were saying, middle high school, middle high school, but just to reiterate, you're, the biggest impact will be more towards the high school-
High school level, yeah. The, the impact's going to be more focused on the high school level because there's just less leveled classes. The middle high school has more leveled classes. So, you know, you, we want to maintain all of our AP offerings because we don't want to cut those programs. Yeah, so, yeah, there might be an AP class that has 14 kids in it. AP physics, I don't know what AP physics has this year, but I just pulled one out of my head. I know AP physics, I don't, how about, as big as a Karen?
At least, like, it's at least 18.
I was, I was going to say, what I was going to say was, AP physics has never had 20 to 25 kids. And most likely, there won't be a lot of times that AP physics is going to have 20 to 25 kids. But we want to run AP physics. So we don't want to eliminate AP physics. AP calc, sometimes AP calculus does have 25 kids in it. One time, we actually, we did, one time, we had over 35 and we ran, we ran two sections of AP calculus. But that doesn't happen very often. You know, but we're going to run AP calculus, we're going to run those courses. But there's such a, there's such a diversity at the high school level in terms of leveling that the impact, the impact of the larger courses are much more likely to occur at the high school level than at the middle school level.
For technology, that's a complete loss of the program at the high school level.
It's a loss of the technology program at the high school level. The program, actually, we just started to bring back. So we had a point, we had a .5 teacher, then we molded that into a full-time teacher. Two, I was high school principal, I should know the exact number. But three or four years ago, we did not have a technology teacher, and we had a two-year stretch of not having a technology teacher at all. So it's a program that we've lost in the past, that we started to build back, that now we're cutting again, or at least proposing to cut again.
So you're calling that phase three, but even with that cut, that still puts us 42,000?
With that cut, that still puts us for, the, what's being proposed here tonight leaves us $42,000 short. And we had, we just couldn't, we couldn't come to a next best decision on what the next position would be. I know people would say, well, you've had some time to work on this. But I will say that every time the group meets, we see another angle, we see another perspective, and the list is changed. So we had, we had enough, we had, we had a position up here to meet the number, and as people really begin to, began, I'm not going to say what that position was, but we had a position up here to meet, because that position may not be the one that's proposed next meeting. We had a position that met the number, and we were really, when people really thought about the impacts of cutting that position and how devastating it would be, we just couldn't, we had to pull it off the list. And we said, let's go back and see if we can find something else. And so maybe that means, maybe it's another, maybe it's another coaching position. Maybe it's another advisory position. Maybe it's another, I don't know what it's going to be. We have ideas out there of what it might be, but the, the teaching position that was on the list, we just felt like was too devastating to have be on the list. Again, not to minimize that any of these aren't devastating. And we, so we pulled it off, and we're going to make a new evaluation on that.
I, I think, again, nothing is final, but I think we've seen this list a little bit here and there. And again, you know, you're, you're bringing something back in with the math specialist at the elementary school, but to me, it's, it's a way that you're showing the creativity to try and maintain what we need to, to make this the best that we can.
Because that, that would have definitely been a phase three cut if we didn't bring that, if we didn't propose bringing, hiring a math specialist as a teacher position. That would be a phase three cut because we'd really be talking about eliminating the math intervention program as it currently exists. And the new, our proposal here doesn't eliminate it, definitely affects it, but doesn't eliminate it.
Well, I guess I'm just saying, I think there's another example of how this is a continual process, and you're, you're trying to work out the best you can. Although, I think the phase two, phase three kind of confuses me because phase three is on phase two.
Yeah, I, so, I'm being honest in saying, that was our original construct, and now we've kind of faded away from that. And I, maybe I've confused people by saying that, but I wanted to at least get that distinction was phase two is originally elimination of a program, major impact. Yeah, so technically, could I have a list that says phase three and put the technology teacher there? I could, I could call it phase three, and whatever, maybe that next position would be, the one that, the other one that was on the list probably was, talking about elimination of a program. And we've kind of said, we want to go back to the drawing board and see if we can find a way to meet that $42,000 shortfall that we currently are. Including, including going back and talking to the town administrators, saying, can we find a way to meet that $42,000 shortfall? So.
Well, I think that's another point, Scott, that it's, this, you know, the efforts and the things we're talking about here don't end here. This effort that you continue working with the staff also continues with the town and trying to find ways with the town to see if there's alternate ways to make up what we need to make up. So I appreciate all your efforts in, in keeping at this.
So again, we're not looking for the committee to vote on any of this this evening. We're looking to, to say this was the proposal of the administration to try to meet that, that shortfall.
No easy task. Any other questions? Statements, concerns?
I have a, I have a few.
Sure.
I've listened to all this tonight, and it's a daunting task, and I really do appreciate everything you and Brad have done through this, and I understand the community's-
And the, the entire administrative team, I don't want Brad and I, it's the whole group working together.
Duly noted. And I appreciate everyone's concerns here tonight, and I, I empathize with all of you. This isn't an easy thing. And it's not really anyone's fault here, I guess, but part of me wants to just state the fact that this just goes to show, we need to have sustainable budgets in this, in this committee and in this, in this department. Ones that look far out into the future, not just in a three-year period. Okay, when the, when the contracts start and end. And I think that's what we're doing now, is taking steps to do that. I am tempted to kind of go down a, a little bit of a dark path, but I won't. But let's just say, people that were here before, when I wasn't on this committee, made decisions on this committee that was not in the best interest of this community or the schools or the teachers. Okay? And I'll leave it at that. And this brought us back to these, this thing we're trying to deal with right now. On trying to find some actual money, I, I looked at the parents out here, and I've heard questions out, out in the community, and I've spoken to Brad about this. And I looked through, I don't know if any of you have this, but I requested this from Brad. This is a three-year comparative budget from what we've spent in the years, years past to what's being proposed. And I looked through line items here, and I know there's an administration position, the math coordinator, coach for $83,000. Is that the only administration position?
That is currently the only administrative position being proposed.
Okay, well, as we spoke of having a comparison of other towns, investigating other towns and what their arts and music programs are, if the committee would indulge me in this one request, I see line items here in administration costs for $107,000 for business office administrates, administration payroll assistance salaries for two people. I'm not saying these people should be targeted, I'm just saying they should be investigated or should be looked into, because I don't think everything should be on the backs of the educational experience of the kids directly. Another one is support salaries for tech, tech positions, I believe, for $100,000. I'm looking at regular educational curriculum and literacy director, $273,409. I'm not sure if that's one or two positions or more. I'm looking at secretarial salaries for the elementary school, $116,000. Now, like I said, I'm not looking to cut people or I want to, but if we're asking for teachers to be cut and for programs to be cut, I think this, if we have to put the community through this pain, it should, it should be looked at in a broad way. And the very least, the group of people that should feel the impact the least are the kids and their educational experience. Okay, and if that means that some people in, working in the front offices have to do, do more, I'm sorry. And maybe that might not make, make me win any friends in this community or in this room for some people, but I'm not here to make friends with people or win friends with people. Okay, I'm here to do the right thing, you know, for the best, you know, that we can, that we can. So I would indulge, I would ask for your indulgence on that. And if, if something comes of it, that's great. If not, I'm not sure, it didn't hurt to look into it. And the other positions I'm seeing here, and I have a question about state law on this, and someone, maybe someone can answer this. On school psychologists for K-5, we have one for $85,000. We have another one in the high, grade six through 12 for $81,000. Although, is that a state mandate that they have to have be on staff?
The school types, school psychologists have to do the testing of our individuals. And it would be an impossible role for, I'm sorry, I'm going to give you my direct answer to that question. It would be an impossible role for one person to be the school psychologist for a school district of 1,600 kids. And I, I could be wrong, I might be reaching here, I would be shocked if any of the teachers in the audience disagreed with that. It, it would all, it would be an impossible role to maintain. And if we didn't have a school psychologist, I mean, those people supported running team meetings, do the testing, the testing has to happen. We'd have to contract that service out. We'd be paying someone else to do it.
Look into how much a contract service would be for that?
I mean, I can tell you the cost of contracting out a psychoed assessment is about $1,000 a student.
Okay.
And that's probably 10 times what it costs us to do it in this district.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm going to say pretty straightforward that the, those are, that would be equivalent to saying, we just, we won't have, we'll have three second-grade teachers.
Well, this is why I'm saying-
Right, so we, I mean, we could look at different, we could look at different grade, we could look at different things and say, yeah, we can eliminate that. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, Andy.
No, no, I know.
I'm just saying that in my, I'm, I understand you putting it out there, but I, I have some concerns of going through line item by line item and saying, should this position be cut? Should this position be cut? And then also, I would, I'm more than willing to address ones you bring up, but I would say the school psychologist would be, that would be a daunting task to have one for the district.
I would also ask, I think you've kind of made a general statement, which I, I agree with. I think all those aspects need to be looked at. But I, I think it should be a general statement and save a more specific conversation when we have more background towards that, you know, because you have that, you're looking at that. We don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. Well, and these positions are just ones I'm saying we should just look at as well. I'm not saying that this one or that one should be, be targeted to be cut. But I think we're trying to weigh everything out.
I guess my, my, my only response to that would be, I do think that as administrative staff, we have really attempted to look at everything. And, you know, we're servicing, you know, over 1,600 to 1,650 students in a wide variety of ways, and, and every, every position in the district has value. And, you know, there, there's a, there's a realistic piece of work that any one person can do. You know, even, so, even another position you mentioned, because I don't want, I don't want to defend some positions and not others because I've, so I'm going to cut myself off. Because I don't want to defend some positions, not others, because I don't want anybody to walk away and say, Mr. Neef supported this position publicly, but he didn't support this position. What I will say is that we did a thorough analysis, we really did look at every position. We had discussions about secretaries, we had discussions about, we've, we've had discussions about every single position in this school district. There hasn't one, there hasn't been one position that hasn't been discussed. And then we've gone forward and put forward as an administrative team what we feel to be the best proposal. And I'm not opposed to counter arguments, I'm not opposed to the committee asking us to look at different positions, I'm not opposed to things shifting. But I guess I want you to know, I want you to be assured as a member of the committee that we have looked at every single position.
Okay.
Thank you, Andy, thank you, Scott. Paula, did you want to add anything?
I'm trying to figure out exactly what I want to add and how.
I'll give you a moment. Andrew?
No, I'm, I'm ready. I just, I guess, I want to go back a few years, you know. Andy, I respect you asking what you need to ask, and that's what we're all here for, and this maps back to our protocols. What I can say is that going into the, finishing up my ninth year on this committee, I have seen cuts and cuts and cuts. And one of the things that, and I have to, I'm just trying to be careful because I don't want to say things that go into union negotiations and bargaining, so I have to be careful, but- But people, it's easy for people to question us as a school committee. It's easy for parents, it's easy for teachers to question what we as a committee do and why, or how much freedom or not we give to the superintendent, be it two superintendents ago or the current superintendent. And it's always going to happen. But, you know, when it came time for us to evaluate Liz's retirement and her superintendent, a lot of considerations went into that. And you're always looking at the value for your dollar. And when we looked at bringing Brad on, I know that was looked at, and you look at experience versus how much they know about our community versus the salary versus the, and you make the best decisions you can. And I just want to remind everyone here that we have already, when we lose a teacher that's retiring, we replace at a lower salary or not at all. We have done that the last several years in a variety of ways to the best of our ability to keep this system afloat. And I think that, you know, I don't necessarily want to ask Scott, and we can decide as a committee, I guess. I respect what you're trying to do here, but I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's fair to put Scott and the administrative team through that again. This is already painful and difficult, and they are putting more on Karen by getting rid of the district coordinator, out of district coordinator. They are putting more burden on some of the other administrative staff and the secretaries through these eliminations of these positions. And with a district of 1,600 students, like Scott said, it's not just the student that a lot of the support staff are supporting, it's the parents calling with requests and complaints and public record requests and things like that that we need to respond to. So I personally, I don't want to ask Scott to go back and do that because I trust Scott, and I've seen the transparency that he's brought to the table. I know the history of where we've been, and I know these administrators because I've worked with them as a parent for many years and as a school committee member. And I just don't think I personally want to do that.
Thank you, Paula. Andrew?
I'll stop by saying, Andy, it's questions, and questions are not a bad thing. We made a point a few months back that we were going to exhaust all options. And you could feel the tension up here. I mean, we get along, we respect each other very well. But with that does come tension, and it does come heated arguments maybe even. But that's not a bad thing. We all want the same thing, everyone in this room wants the same thing. We've just got to figure out how to get there in the best way we can, not only for the kids, for the town, for the teachers, but we have to figure out a way to do it in the best way we can, and that's what we want to do. That's where that tension's coming from, it's coming from a good place.
So the reality.
That was cutting me off, yes.
Building, building on your point. Building on your point, Andrew. You know, the reality is, I've said, that every time we meet, the list change because people bring a different perspective, a different point of view. And I think myself and the administrative team are open to that different perspective and different point of view. Andy raising questions tonight about specific areas is going to bring, we're going to go back and look at those things. So Paul, it's not that we're, I think we're doing that anyhow. So I don't feel like Andy saying this is making me feel like, okay, we have to go back and redo this whole process.
I guess that's what I was trying to say, is that I trust you, Andy.
We're continually doing that.
Right.
And as I said, a position came off the list because through our discussions, we said we can't, we can no longer support that. And it's always good to get a different perspective. I know I responded directly about one of them because I just feel like, maybe I managed to have that background on what goes into those two positions, that ultimately, we're going to reevaluate, and we're going to go back to it again because we still have to come up with another $40,000. And we're going to take public input. We've had public input tonight, we're probably going to have more public input in February. And we're going to take that in and take all those things into consideration. And then ultimately, it's my responsibility as the superintendent to make the best decisions for students. And, you know, the best decision for students is to not do any of these things, but you have to balance the realities. So based on the realities of where we are, that is going to be forefront of my mind in trying to make what are the best decisions for students.
Thank you, Scott. James, do you have anything you'd like to add? If not, I'm hoping you'll make a motion for executive session and let us know if we will be returning to open session or not, please.
Well, I'd make a motion to adjourn regular session first, do we? Or just move to executive session?
To adjourn regular session.
To adjourn regular session, be the first motion, yes.
I'll second.
Having a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All five, Anne Marie?
And then.